All right, I want to call this January thirty first, twenty twenty four meeting to order. Ruth, do you want to lead us in?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all.
Eddie here, have any donations or anything, Eddie? I think it's at nine oh five.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the real property exoneration presented this morning.
One second.
All in favor? I'm making a motion to.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve payroll through February ninth.
Second.
All in favor? Ruth, is there anything standing out about vouchers and invoices?
Oh, so the parking for this upcoming year, the sound of the block and one additional parking lot should be on here.
Well, that was part of the agreement, Ruth. I just told her to work it out with Sonny, which spaces we were going to sign probation as part of Judge Blake. And that's what she worked out.
And he also, so on that topic, we had talked about that parking lot was a grassy area and Anthony suggested if he put gravel down and actually use two more spaces and Adam was good with that.
Okay, so that, to me, that's within your authority. I don't know what you.
Yeah, I don't have.
I mean. That's, that's.
I make a motion to approve vouchers and invoices.
Second.
All in favor?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for January third and nineteenth.
Second, all in favor? State settlements.
Can I move to approve these state settlements?
Say them, say. All, all in favor?
What, nine oh five? Ruth, did you approve the minutes? Yeah.
We approve the minutes.
Okay, insurance, so these are the ones for meals for animal shelters.
Okay, I'm moving that we approve the flood insurance renewal.
So the only question, option A, these increased coverage, but don't they, the cost of everything? It's like five eighty-one versus five eighty-six.
Oh, well then I renew my motion to approve with the increased coverage.
Second, all in favor?
The second thing's a letter. Do you have a letter?
I have not seen the letter. No, let's just, we can probably come back to that.
Okay. Annual maintenance agreement for software systems.
Was I gonna write, was I gonna write that letter? Okay, I'll write it though.
Well, when I talk about insurance, I don't think we're going to do much.
Okay.
Software systems renewals, they always give one year and three year options. One's three thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven hundred. I mean, that's a little bit of a savings. We'd have to have it anyway.
Hundred bucks a year.
So that's entirely up to y'all.
I don't think we can enter into three year.
I mean, that's kind of what I thought, but it probably says unless you don't assign, you know, the clause. It doesn't. Well, it looks like three one year.
Yeah, either one year or they enter that clause and then we can.
We could do.
Well, we get back to them and.
Okay.
Okay, so I want to postpone that item.
Yeah, it's.
Second.
What is next?
All in favor?
It's also nine oh five.
Okay.
Hey, Eddie.
Thank you, Ruth. The big commission will now meet as a board of equalization and review. Eddie, did you have any petition?
Yes, sir.
Does anybody in the room have a petition? If there's nobody in the room, I'd like to make the motion to recess as a board of equalization and review and reconvene at nine AM on February sixth, twenty twenty-four. All in favor? Yep. All right, Ruth, what else you got?
That's for their maintenance. I told him I won't put him on the agenda again unless he has answers.
You have answers?
Are they on the?
Amy, the website?
So they have, I sent them a list of generic emails that they set up for us that we're going to use for each department to have access. And I sent them in that list and they wanted me to trouble, to get in first and make sure it worked and it did. I did not want to start making any changes or anything, but I wrote back to them and said, yep, I'm in, it's working great and I've been great since.
That's, I mean.
It's just kind of, and that's kind of, I do have access, but I.
Are they on the call? G S T on the call?
I don't see.
They should be on the call.
Yeah, I want to move it because.
Yeah, they should be.
This has been terrible. We don't have a website. It's been a year since I met.
So that is separate and without that agreement, they don't service any things or anything.
Well, if we, if we have to agree to this, I'd like to have them on, I'd like to have them in the next meeting.
Well, I tell them they need to be on the six, here on the six.
Yes, and I wouldn't mind them being here in person.
Yeah, same.
No zoom in person.
Okay.
So if they can't on the sixth, then they need to come on the next meeting.
Six to twelve.
So I mean, we postpone the G S T agreement to a future meeting, this hopefully the sixth.
Second, all in favor?
This is the grant amendment for deep water. Who's had to approve it? Tom already signed it.
Sometimes we have things that happen that are time sensitive and this was one of them, grant amendment to, for the P S C. That Leslie Taylor has already briefed us on in a, in a public meeting, but we needed to have Tom sign it in advance of the meeting and we have to prove it retrospectively. So I moved that we approve it and this is trying to fix the water up Armstrong Creek.
Is that from?
It's the water tank.
Water tank.
Yeah, well, I'm, I meant to get water flowing, but yeah.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Okay, the letter to the Mount near Challenge Academy graduates that you requested, Allison.
Oh, yeah.
Our motion to approve.
Well, let me say something, but thank you.
She's a lawyer.
So, well, we have two cadets from Fayette County who graduated with honors from the Mount near Challenge Academy, so we just wanted to recognize.
That's good.
What, yeah, that's, I mean, it's a tough program and to get them out of there with their education, in fact, knowing what probably the types of things that probably got them into the Mount near Challenge Academy is, is quite a feat. And so I wanted us to send them something to recognize how well they did. So there's Elijah Canada and Annie Taylor, no relation. So John moved, we approved our second.
All in favor?
To go along with that, that is a tough program and, and before we've had one go to. An academy and it was the only one out of both challenge academies and it came out of Fayette County. I, I think that I would like for us to consider sending letters to all their graduates because it is a tough program and some are continuing their military career.
We, I mean, yeah, I just read about these in the paper. They're the first ones I've been notified of.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it's a big deal that they graduate, but it's very difficult program.
How many people usually graduate anyway?
I don't know, but I do know that there's a lot of attrition. It's a tough military program. You go to Montgomery, you'll see them running around the old tech campus.
All right, the next is your response letter to the Humane Society.
So we received.
No, go ahead.
We received a letter from Fayette County Humane Society with a concern that our, one of our animal control officers was going in to the shelter that the county owns. After hours, no accusation that she was doing anything wrong, so we responded and we saw the video also and she did nothing wrong. We responded letting them know that it is within her responsibilities to enter that building that belongs to us. But that while she is on secondary duty for other reasons and not serving as animal control, that she will not enter the shelter at their request. So I move we approve your letter.
Second, all in favor?
And we just said there is a hundred and one graduates in that class.
Not from Fayette County, though.
That's their largest class then.
Yeah, yeah, this, I was, I mean, I'm proud of the other graduates too, that I've been recognizing Fayette County graduates as support for us.
Got camp sore.
Yeah, so this is just a letter requested by Katie Johnson, basically saying that you support camps or they need it for funding application that we're doing.
This is the camp that we had at the park last summer, right?
Right.
And of course we support it and, and I still would like us to consider paying for all of the participants. Because when I went to the valley and did that read aloud program, a lot of the kids couldn't afford the seventy-five dollars.
Yeah, we talked about that.
So keep that in mind if you would.
They haven't, they, they don't really turn down people, like just like when there's, if they do the application and move that soft, that's why I've seen their partner, they, they're, they're going to work with.
Yeah, I think. The, the problem is, is if it says on there seventy-five dollars, you know, the people are like, I can't afford this, you know, they're not going to necessarily read the whole thing and, you know, I mean, I would. I would just.
Maybe we just allocate so much money for it. I mean, I mean, I mean, I'm not hoping not speaking out of turn.
Could you make a proposal to us at a future date about how much we might need to allocate to pay for those, that participation? Because it really was a success this year and, and I think with time it will become an even bigger success. Okay, all right.
We, what, that's good, but twenty, twenty-five, twenty-five kids, there's a lot of repeat, they did it a few times throughout the summer, I believe, they're pretty busy and active every week and it's a great, like, we need to, that's what you should do tomorrow.
That'll hurt sixty.
And you were able to participate this year.
It's just seventy-five bucks, right?
Yeah.
Per kid?
Per week.
Oh, per week.
I think it's per week.
How many weeks?
Forty thousand's what we.
Six, was it six weeks?
I'm not sure. Yeah, it could be.
I thought, remember, but I think we allocated forty thousand's what we allocated.
But I mean, if they just come in and tell us what they need.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's right. Yeah, make, yeah, make, that's what I was saying, make a proposal on how much.
She's coming in, she's, Katie's actually got a plan, she's coming in to do it, she's a B C now, so.
Okay.
I spoke to her this morning, do about it, so yeah.
Did we already move to, to approve this, Amy? Okay, I, I move that we approve the letter in support of Camp Sore.
Second, all in favor?
Okay, so the next thing is a, this just, it stands on our A D P service. We kind of postponed it last year because it was taking too long to set up, so.
We're ready.
And actually, I'm going to say by postponing that they gave us a discount, so it's actually cheaper this way.
Well, I move that we approve it, we knew it was coming.
Second, all in favor? One more.
Uh, roof replacement bid approval. Basically, you guys just, I think, need to acknowledge because Amy's applying as part of her grant, that you know, we're putting out a request for bridge.
It is.
Bridge.
I move that we approve submitting the request for bids.
Second, all in favor?
Yeah, this, the, this is the New Haven P S D board appointment, Chenern Life. There's an application letter ordered. She's replacing, or yeah, Roma Lively.
I would also like the commission to acknowledge Mr. Lively's length of service with New Haven and Dothan P S D. Send him a letter, please.
Oh, that's a good idea.
He's been there forever.
Yeah, forty plus years.
Oh, my gosh, really? That's a serious service.
We'll sign this and then.
So I'll make a motion to approve Ms. Lake going on to New Haven P S D.
Second.
All in favor? Yep. Oh, I guess I'm going to floor in Mr. Reifart, right, Mike?
Yes, Lieutenant Willis, he's not able to attend, we have a incident that happened in this building, so he's done and working that, so. Ryan Hart, Lieutenant Sergeant, we have sixteen years with our department next month, fifteenth interview. So they went through the process of tests and evaluation and stuff and they were submitted to the Civil Service Commission and there's a high student on the list.
That's awesome. Congratulations, Jimmy.
I come down there, Mike, I've never done this.
Yes.
I will swear that I will support Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of San West Virginia. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Officer Sergeant.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of Sergeant.
In and for Fayette County Sheriff Department.
In and for Fayette County Sheriff Department.
In and for the County of Fayette, State of West Virginia.
For the County of Fayette, State of West Virginia.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
So have we got.
So have we got.
Congratulations.
But Sheriff can't.
I'd like to get a picture of Red, okay?
I mean, if all those guys get up, we might have to.
Yeah, let's, let's get to the back, we can stand up for the.
I can't breathe, Mike, I'm using his phone again.
Yeah, I got it.
I got it over there, right, right here, thank you. You have signed it, don't mind. I do, oh, that's.
Congratulations. Start to sound like Judge Hatcher. I thought I didn't have it, sign it the exact way you had it typed.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, brother.
So.
Right here.
Okay, Davisman.
Yeah, I've always signed that one too.
They didn't.
It says it did, not from time.
Well, that's because his term inspired him.
Yeah, he would still serve in place.
Oh, okay.
So I move that we approve David Smith's reappointment to the Page Kincaid P S D.
Second, all in favor?
And then the ballot issue.
Got a letter there behind that.
Well, you're keeping me on my toes today, John.
We have some orders.
And the rest, is Democratic, William Best is Republican.
You know, you're always.
You've been noted.
If he has to sign something, then we should vote on it.
I'll have to sign, I think it's what Michelle said. I was just curious.
Okay, so ballot commissioners, the Democratic ballot commissioner is Ms. Edna Riston and Mr. William Best is the Republican ballot commissioner.
Yeah, I read it in the back.
Response is solid waste.
That's all of them? They're the solid waste.
Yeah, I saw the, I saw the letter, Amy finished it and it looks good, so I'll move that we approve the letter to solid waste, basically accepting their offer to return the truck that we helped pay for to the political officer for his use. And here it says, thanks them for contacting us and just tells them that, you know, we will accept it and that it will help because it's, it has a patented tab. And right now, Day Report has to drive separately from van to help him on these jobs and with this vehicle, he'll be able to haul them with.
He's here. Steve Davis is.
I'll second.
All in favor?
We appreciate this. We had asked for it some time ago.
He's here.
Yeah, I saw, I saw Mr. Davis back there. Yeah, I know him. Um, but we appreciate this. It's going to make a difference for him to be able to haul his help with him instead of, understand when I'm talking like he's not here. I put these on and I'll be able to.
There you go.
Oh, that's, okay.
Right. He already is busy. I'm really proud of you.
I'm going to let you take care of that by twenty-five. It's okay with John.
Yeah.
Okay, is everybody here that's coming from nine one one? Okay, well, Becky, if you'd like to stand up, we'd like to recognize you.
So Becky is one of those rare people who have been serving the county for almost forty years in some capacity. She was with the tax office and has been over at nine one one in various capacities, whether it's working with the fire association, working with the emergency management team or the nine one one center itself. She still does a combination of those things, has been a part of her job while she does a lot of other things. So we're really pleased to have had you with us at home and wanted to recognize your service. I mean, I know certificate isn't a huge deal, but, but it means something to us. And so we thank you for all your service and everything you've done and wish you the best of luck in your next endeavor.
You put that with us.
Especially him, but anyway, thank you so much, Becky.
I just had to say that these last ten years have been the best. Working with the, the firemen in Fayette County has been so rewarding. And this is a bunch of, of men, there are women who do not get to praise the friends of ours. And I just think that they need to have a recognition themselves. I do, I can understand that, I see things. Anyway, we agree.
Hey, we going to take a photo?
Do you want a photo?
Hey, Ruth? Can we have the, just to have the bid opens up here, I mean, it's not time, but can we go and have?
We can at least get started.
And we just divvy them out. I know, I know the one I want.
No, you don't, because you have an open day, it's your talk about the unit. Yeah, so first is your July today.
Oh, okay.
And you can have three or four of those.
Uh, for the record, there's four bids.
And they are from.
No, I'm going to wait till them.
Well, we can open them then, but we can record about who they're from.
I got Empire Savage.
Echo Inc. And this one, we claim.
Brown envelope grease.
I don't know, it's in one. Echo Inc. is out of Charleston. Who's that one?
Okay, I have Smokey Joe.
We're not gonna, it's not nine thirty yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I mean, I, I won't go say anything.
Y'all want to look at, these are the houses that they're bidding on.
Yeah.
It's like a Christmas present.
Now, all three of these, one is owned by the L R A, the property owner donated it to us and the other two, they've already, Anthony's already done the volunteering, so after today.
What's going on with that house right at six twelve?
So that house, one of the property owners, part of the process we have to still at them and we are planning to relocate, which we have, and then we also hired prospects over and.
We probably need to do an ad then.
But that is on the tax.
It, it also is on the tax list. Yeah, that person has some legal problems, so lotion, Anthony's working on it.
He's at Dallas Van. Dallas Van.
I know the name.
Sorry, I didn't want to say the name.
He has a number of actions pending in, against, with the state of West Virginia, but he's also, he appeared in Oakville municipal for it. I saw him, he was supposed to come back. We were prepared to serve when we came back and he absconded, so.
He crawled out the window this morning when I went by. Yeah, he crawled out the, the window of that house this morning as I went by.
Serious.
Yeah.
Too bad the deputies aren't still here.
So I'll know by when he gets here.
Okay.
But the, the plan was to get him back and serve in one of the, the war process, so now that we kicked this out, so we're serving him right in jail.
Yeah, he was, there was one of three people coming out the window this morning.
But if he's in jail, he's going to have. But if he's in jail, he's gonna have a difficult time appearing. So can you guys make arrangements for that?
Right. Guardian line must be appointed, not to take action, but while he's there, guardian line accepts services you have, so we recognize them.
Okay. All right, looks like it's time.
Yeah, John, it's nine-thirty. I don't know what you're talking about.
Good job, John.
I'll let y'all catch up.
I didn't even get a chance to look at the number yet. I had to find the name.
My bid is, uh, from Empire's twenty-nine thousand dollars for three, um, properties.
Do you want them individual?
If you can, we have to, for we, we have to deal, I have to break them down individually.
You need to tell them individually.
Oh, individually?
Yeah.
Even though it's a group, okay.
Because we contract them individually, it's a group.
One for Golly River Road is fourteen thousand, Midland Trail is ten thousand, and Deepwater is five thousand.
Okay, on Smokey Joe.
Smokey Joe, where is that out of?
Daly, West Virginia. Golly River Road is sixteen thousand five hundred. Midland Trail, Carleton, Charlton Heights is eighteen thousand two fifty-five, and Deepwater Mountain is fifteen six hundred, for a total price of fifty thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Echo Inc. out of Charleston for Golly River Road is twelve thousand four hundred fifty. Charlton Heights is eleven thousand three hundred, and Deepwater Mountain Road is ten thousand seven hundred, for a total of thirty-four thousand four hundred fifty. And then reclaim out of Fairmont is twelve thousand for Golly River Road, um, twelve thousand for Charlton Heights, and eighty-nine hundred for Deepwater Mountain Road, for a total of thirty-two thousand nine hundred even.
Then probably have the lowest total.
The lowest bidder is reclaim.
Oh, no, Empire Savage.
Empire.
Twenty-nine thousand.
Okay.
Low was regal.
I wasn't paying attention. Okay.
So all the developments have been done on this. We just have to make a motion to approve.
Yeah, on these three, and we already have voluntary signatures. We already have everything legal done. Um, they are voluntary demolitions, so the great grant will cover the cost of everything.
I make a motion to approve Empire for twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Second. Was it twenty-nine thousand?
All in favor? Yes, we gotta wait. You wanna take a break till, because we're gonna wait till nine forty-five.
Yeah.
Let's take a break till nine forty-five. I don't wanna call the meeting back to order. Ruth, you got, get ready. You got, get ready stuff? I've already read it. I think.
Those are the RFPs.
Yeah.
Or the legal reference protection, basically.
So they're not bids, they're not RFPs.
Is Amanda one?
Yes.
So we had one from Spillman Thomas and Battle, had one from Louis Gianola, had one from Steptoe and Johnson. And the third, fourth one. Schuman, McCusky, Slicer. And then I thought we had one from a sole practitioner. Am I missing something?
There's four of them.
Only four?
I think there's only four, isn't it? I think there's only four.
I'll just look at it and see what I'm, see if I can resolve what I'm thinking. Where's your, where's your stuff? Okay, that's two together. That's one of those. All right, so we had four. Did I read all four? Did I read all four?
Yep.
I did miss one, so. So it was Steptoe and Johnson, Spillman Thomas and Battle, um, Schuman, McCusky, Slicer, and Gianola. Yeah, Gianola, Louis Gianola.
Yeah, that's four of them, isn't it?
Well.
I looked over, man. I'm gonna make a suggestion. An emotional Steptoe and Johnson, how the other two commissioners feel about it.
Well, I mean, I read them, and I too like the proposal by Steptoe, um, for the following reasons. In its, in its submission, it told us that it is representing several other counties in this, same issue and broadband projects, including Greenbrier, Summers, and Webster. And I know that when we've had meetings with, when we've had meetings with the broadband companies, that they would be bringing our broadband from that direction through Webster County, so I think it's significant that they are representing Webster County. Further, uh, they do not have conflicts of interest with any of the telephone ISPs or internet providers, and I thought that was significant. And I will say that, you know, the one thing that I didn't like about that proposal was that it was more costly, the, the attorney's hours were more costly than a couple of the other proposals, and one in particular. But given their expertise, in my opinion, it's, it's worth it. So I'll, did you make a motion?
I don't have a motion, but.
I, uh, I wasn't shown these till, right before the meeting started, so I couldn't make a, a, um.
You wanna postpone it till sixth?
No, I mean, you, you two guys have already read them, and, and you feel that, well, it depends on what Allison says. So I'll, I'll defer to you two on this one.
If you don't feel comfortable, John, I mean, we'll, we'll postpone it to the sixth.
Well, I would like to look at them, yes.
Okay, well, I make a motion, postpone it to the sixth.
Okay, second.
All in favor? All right, we'll take another break till ten o'clock. We gotta wait till ten.
No, I wanna, um, I wanna move that we go into executive session, um, to discuss our councils about
that.
Which item was it? The dilapidated item, or?
It's not on the agenda. It was just.
Oh, okay, then we don't need to go to executive. Let's take a break.
Take a break. I would call this meeting back to order.
That means it's.
We got, uh, bid openings for the roof repair department, ten o'clock. A little bit confused about this. There's three different three different figures and not a total.
What I'm trying to fix, if they had an option of repainting out some of the wood, it's.
And here, I'm gonna say, you know, maybe that's what I'm confused about. Maybe this may need deciphering. You put, you put it out there.
They did one where they replaced over the roof, like to rip out, take it apart, and then they had one where they just came in and put it over the existing.
What is that? I mean, is that, I mean.
A lot of roof becoming, it's all tech, it's a repol.
Yeah, I know, but is, is the roof stable enough to just put another roof on top?
That's, that, they said it was.
So I'm, I'm, that's what I'm confused about. I give a bid to take it off. I mean, I mean, I don't know. I'm just confused about it, but okay.
It was, uh.
The invitation for the VNSA was going.
Yeah, it's in, uh. So it was now.
Was, yeah. So I mean, I, I, you know.
Did you require a bid bomb?
Was there a bid bomb on that?
So there's, which one of these is the one that dead bombed?
Yeah, I'm here to support the work in project, we'll leave the existing shield roof intact.
Okay, this one says remove. I just, I'm just, I'm trying to figure this out.
This one.
No, he says remove existing metal roof.
Was there an existing metal roof?
Yeah, it says metal roof, so that's not it.
Yeah, this is true.
That's usually required, those are grants.
Hey, Amy, I'm mailing with the.
I'm, I'm just. A little bit confused about this. I shouldn't make.
Are we gonna read the bids out?
Yeah.
Go ahead, read the bid. Tell me what, exclude which ones. I'm confused. Okay, um, bid received for Alpha Construction is sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. You writing them down, Ruth? Okay, okay. West Virginia Design Built LLC is thirty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty. And Lee Rigor Builds is forty-five thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Say that number again, forty-five?
Forty-five, three sixty-five.
Clear standard, Brian? Are you getting it? Are you getting it?
Oh.
Here's the, um, language I sent to Amy.
Yeah.
So in reality, all y'all have to do is read them out, and you can say your review and decide on the next meeting.
Right. It's you, it's you, it's similar to the project. These are just like similar.
Oh, okay.
It's similar with them.
Okay. Why didn't I see that?
I could've told you that, but.
Does he always do that?
Yes. Dan Hill's bid is seventy-three thou, seventy-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-five, sixty-six.
What I have here. The Roof Doctor's bid is thirty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents.
What was the one we're doing, too?
Yeah, well, he's already read his off while you was doing this.
Oh, okay.
Then I read that one off of Dan Hill's. So Ruth, we can wait till the sixth to make a decision on these?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, the, the specs with, I figured, yeah. Okay, we've read them all, so.
Hard to believe they're sitting in a meeting.
Will he let us know before the sixth? Ruth, will you, will he let us know before the sixth, the engineer?
I mean, I think, yeah, we can review that.
Oh, they can review it, okay.
They can read them and go from there. You can take those with you.
Keep them with the envelope.
And the one on the last stapled up to the bid.
Oh, right.
The one thing left is.
Yeah, I'm reading, I'm reading what, I'm gonna give this to John here. Hey, John, we'll read that. Cool. Good with it?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll look at it one more time.
Well, Amy will catch him. But I didn't, probably, I need the date, obviously, for that letter, she says.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to go on my computer and there, search it.
I just.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will.
Hey, Josh. Josh.
Yeah.
Are y'all here to talk about a meeting, a scheduled meeting?
We're, we're just here to see what's going on. I mean.
But I think we'll put you in the sixth. Yeah.
Writing, and we need to time to put it together to be able to reply in writing, because all this back and forth and the fifteen meetings we had with you guys last year, we haven't resolved much. We don't have much to show court, I think. And so I think if we're gonna communicate, you know, on official business with, with an outside entity, it needs to be in writing, so it was my request that it be in writing. There's also no guarantee if you submit an agenda request to go and get on the agenda, but, but this agenda was packed, because we haven't had a meeting since the third of January. So we needed time to get on that letter and to get it written.
In fact, I don't think there's anything else on the sixth. We've allocated everything.
Yeah, but we have to meet every day.
Well, we have bid openings. Wow, I didn't think there's.
Anytime the fire association's on the agenda, it takes a lot of time, so we've gotta make sure that we, we're able to give that kind of time. Also.
Yeah, and I mean, I would've, and to let you on, I mean, I would've turned the request in earlier, but I would.
I, I know. I, I, I know.
It may not have mattered, because this agenda was so packed, and again, it take, we usually end up at least an hour on fire issues.
At least. So we knew this, yeah.
We wanted to put it on a meeting that wasn't full, and plus to give our lawyer a chance to look at the project and make sure we have all the answers, right, because we're not.
Yeah, man, I'm trying to do it right, so I gave you a question, and we're asking.
Yeah. But we're not, you know, I, I saw some of the drama on Facebook, and there's really no need for that. I mean.
That wasn't, it wasn't fed bills, mainly Oak Hill and Smith, so it's not, you know, I don't care.
Well, Smithers is now run by the city, isn't it?
Yeah, it, it, it doesn't matter to me. I enjoy it, I guess.
Well, I expect drama out of Smithers.
I mean, I just, like I said, I just think we was under, understand, might be on this agenda. we was under lunch, Dan, I'd be on this agenda from time, you know, I'll do that in a month. And, you know, that kind of follows, especially about sending questions and everything.
Yeah.
You know, I just.
Oh, they'll, they'll be answered.
We have to get together, when you send questions, like they're.
Oh, I get it. I mean, we're all busy.
Yeah, but I mean, to, you know, those are questions that have to be researched and put together, and we want our lawyer to put it together, so then we could all review it, because we can't meet prior to answer questions. We have to meet during the meeting, so. Anyway, if he puts something together, that'll give us something to look at, and that way we can be ready, and we can reply in, in writing. So that's really what, that's really what it was about, to give us time and.
That way you'll have everything in writing, not, not, not only in a meeting.
And nobody has to watch the YouTube.
So everything will be, everything will be in writing, and each fire department will get it, probably even send it to each fire departments. Post office box or wherever they're at, just so they have a copy of it. Make sure, yeah, because I know everybody's not gonna show up. Maybe, though.
I don't know.
Maybe, maybe, maybe everybody here, it probably will be, we have, have to do this in Memorial.
I can bring them on people, you think.
Oh, I hear you. I know, I know.
I'm filing the letter, so.
I just wanted to let you know, I didn't know whether I, I wasn't letting you know.
And sorry about the loss of your family too. It's tough.
Mother, it's mother and father.
Okay, um, so everybody, we had a letter that we needed to have ready for Judge Blake, and I typed it. The other commissioners have read it. We're not gonna be able to print it just yet, because Amy has to get a date to put in the letter, you know, Judge Blake's letter to refer to. But otherwise, nothing else is gonna change. She's just gonna fill in the blank for the date. So I moved that we approved the letter to Judge Blake informing him of um, our acceptance of his offer on where to move the probation department. And they're gonna occupy it across the street. And the offices they currently occupy on the left side of the partition, if you're looking at the probation department, so one with the bathrooms, so they can continue to do drug testing and things that they do in there. Um, and we are gonna allocate seven parking spaces, so this is basically telling Judge Blake we agree to his suggestions. And um, also updating him that the building is ready for occupancy. And let him know that uh, we need the courts to work with the Supreme Court of Appeals to get their computers moved. And ask them to identify two dates to Ruth, so then Ruth can set up movers, because we wanna make sure we have an alternate date in case the movers have a conflict. So that's, that's the gist of the letter and.
Second, you did make a motion then.
Yeah, that was a motion.
Second. All favor.
Hi, and are we gonna authorize, you know, our names stamped on the letter, if we're not here?
Yes, new stamp, yes. All right.
That's it?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.